All right, the time is ten forty-three and we're back in session. And I've misplaced my agenda, but I believe that's item number?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty? Budget workshop. Angela has prepared some information for us and I'll turn it over to her at this time so she can go over the paperwork with us and the figures.
Okay, we'll start with adjusting the employees' hourly rates. These were departments that submitted requests to Judge McDaniel in adjusting hourly rates, their step increases. And at the last, last court, I was asked to provide how much this would cost the county to provide these increases. And the increases, the total is twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars. Payroll taxes is two thousand, two sixty-eight. Retirement is four thousand, two forty-eight, for a total cost of thirty-six thousand, one sixty. And attached to these, this sheet is the various departments that have requested step increases.
All right, and this amount, this, if I go back to the top in the twenty-nine, six forty-four figure that you gave, that includes a two percent increase?
I separated out the departments, yes, and then added the two percent increase, so you can, twenty-nine, one thirty-nine, and then the two percent raise.
All right. So at the bottom, the thirty-six, one sixty is the total?
That is correct.
And then below that, if we do a two percent increase of everybody across the board, it would be two thirteen, two twenty-six. And then if we add the thirty-six, one sixty, the actual grand total is two forty-nine, three eighty-six?
That is correct. That is estimated, yes.
Okay. Any questions on that, from any more?
Thank you, Angela.
Is the next one gonna be this page that starts at the top, it says fifty-six cent tax rate?
Okay. This is a breakdown of the beginning of the contingency and the estimating collecting of the revenue and expenditures, and what it would take to balance the budget with different options. The first page is the fifty-six cent tax rate. The first column, it, the, it would take four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars to balance the, the budget. And that, that amount consists of four hundred and thirteen thousand, one thirty-six. And that is your revenue with fifty-six, six, fifty-six cent tax rate. It's your revenue minus your expenditures. It's four hundred and thirteen thousand, one thirty-six. Not included in that was the insurance increase for each employee, which is an additional twenty dollars a month, health insurance. So that by totaling that to the number of employees we have on the health insurance, that's a forty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty dollar increase. So we needed to add those two amounts, so the total is four fifty-seven, two ninety-six. That's without any salary increases. To balance the budget with a two percent raise, plus the salary adjusted adjustments that we just went over, that would cost seven hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars. So up at the top, as, we have a contingency of three million, two hundred and seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Your first option without salary increases, you deduct, deduct four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and ninety-six. So you're estimating your contingency for two thousand fifteen, sixteen is two million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars and seventy-five cents. With your second, second option, with the two percent raises, plus the salary adjustment, when you subtract seven hundred and six thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars, your in, estimated beginning contingency fund would be two million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars and seventy-five cents. Does anyone have any questions on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I guess it's just a misunderstanding on my part, but if I'm looking at everything the way you're saying, the fifty-six, fifty cent, fifty-six cent tax rate.
Right.
We're talking about the current budget we're in right now. We're not talking about the budget we're working on. Is that right?
No, sir. This is the budget that we're working on because...
Fifty-six, behind it is fifty-seven.
If we lift the tax rate at fifty-six cents.
Okay. All right. Then all these numbers that you have on budget amendments were taken out of the current budget we're in right now.
Well, if, if you will look at what I have provided before, your, or up at the top of this page, for example, your audit report beginning this contingency, your audit report as of September two thousand fir- fourteen was three million, eight hundred and seventeen thousand and ten dollars. And so then we made these budget amendments since fourteen, fifteen years started. So we, that's what the hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety, I mean, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, ninety-one dollars. That's your total of budget amendments that have been made throughout this fourteen, fifteen year.
The one we're currently in.
Mm-hmm. So we subtract that amount to get to the ending of your, in, to get to the bottom line of your contingency for two thousand fifteen, sixteen, after you adopt your budget.
We got three point eight and then a hundred and forty-nine thousand in expenditures, and it's showing three point two. Have we spent more to get it? Cause that's about, what, five or six hundred thousand?
But I think, if I'm not mistaken, the three ninety-one is in, is, is included in these numbers of the...
Okay.
What it cost, yes, what it...
To balance the budget.
Correct.
That was from last year. Three ninety-one. Yeah. Okay. I'm with you now.
Remember that too.
Correct. Okay.
I was looking for it down here, but I think it's included.
It's in your revenue and expenditures. This is the format that, that is in your adopted budget.
Right.
And I thought that's what Commissioner Pell had wanted for this meeting.
So the three ninety-one is really in the estimated expenditures?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I'm checking with you. Thank you.
So...
Yes, sir.
To work on the budget that we've been working on, which is two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We're starting with no, no raises. We're starting negative four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
That is correct, at a fifty-six, six cent tax rate.
So we would have to come up with that amount of cuts or raise our tax rate.
Correct, or take it from your contingency.
So this oughta go pretty fast. I mean, that's pretty simple.
Right. And then I get it. She's got it. Did you see the second sheet, no?
No, I ain't looked at no second sheet.
Second sheet's where, look at, look at the second sheet.
Okay, your second sheet is if the tax rate was at your effective tax rate of point five seven six nine.
I just have a question before we go much further, but that is finalized. That is the effective tax rate?
That is what Ms. Stevens presented to us.
Okay, and that's, and it's final, let's not change it.
We would have to discuss that with Ms. Stevens.
We don't expect a change.
That's right. We would have to discuss that with Ms. Stevens.
Could we get Ms. Stevens down here?
Sure.
Please.
Would you like me to read?
Yes, ma'am, let's go ahead.
While we're waiting on Ms. Stevens. Okay, this is the same format as the first page. And it actually will increase your revenue where, to balance the budget for fifteen, sixteen, it increases your revenue enough where you're actually not in a deficit any longer. You're in the, you're in a positive of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars without raises. So that actually adds to your contingency by nineteen thousand, nine fifty-nine without raises. Now, if you gave a two percent raise, plus the salary adjusted adjustments that we discussed, then it would take two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars to balance your budget with your, your tax rate. I mean, with your, with your revenue. I mean, with your salary increases, excuse me, with your salary increases.
So if we adopt the effective tax rate and give a two percent wage increase, the amount we would have to take out of contingency or find additional cuts would be two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Correct.
Thank you for working on this, because I know it was a lot of work and it, and it does make sense the way, the way I'm looking at it. I would like to say this for the record, especially for Daniel, whenever he prints his article. Be sure, Daniel, you interview our tax collector. Because it's gonna appear when we, if this court decides to, to adopt the effective tax rate, it's gonna appear that we're voting for a tax increase, which we are, basically. But I would like for it to be known, especially to the public and, and everyone, that this effective tax rate this year should have actually been our effective tax rate last year. So, and it's, it's kinda complicated, but, uh, I, you know, I just want that to be known.
And you might also add, we won't be collecting any more taxes this year than we collected last year. We'll be collecting them from a different source.
This, this would be what it would take us to operate the same as last year.
Same as last year. But because of the oil and gas, mainly oil losses, we'd be able to be collecting from a different source. Isn't that right?
I don't know.
More so from Adblock than it would be from royalties, I guess.
Well, we don't collect royalties, but, uh...
Uh, the, uh, oil and gas.
The Adblock taxes upon the oil values will drop because the price has dropped. We've lost, I don't know what the total amount is, but somewhere around eight hundred thousand dollars. And we made up part out with our new construction. But the oil price drop means we're gonna bring in eight hundred thousand, or some amount, less taxes. And that's the reason, but our effective tax rate, we'll bring in the same amount of taxes it did last year, but it will bring in, oil and gas will pay less, and everyone else will pay a little bit more. It's very simple. And, you know, we're not collecting more taxes, we're collecting from a different source.
Ms. Stevens, I don't blame you none whatsoever for...
Well, usually Alex had brought me some corrected figures, again.
Are they good or bad?
They, they didn't.
Can I, before you...
How's that big of a impact?
Before you get into that, can I just basically reaffirm something you said in our, our last meeting? Regardless of whose fault it was, or what the problem was, or anything else, our effective tax rate last year should have been fifty-seven, correct? And we were operating at fifty-six?
Yes.
Okay.
Because, see, with that extra ten million that Alex had put in...
On the rolling?
On the, on the rolling stock.
And the estimated value.
Then that dropped your effective down. So I went down and pulled those out. And then that showed that your, uh, your effect, your effective rate should have been fifty-seven cents.
Okay.
Yeah, but that has been...
I really did not, my intentions was not to put you on the spot, but I recommended that our newspaper man talk to you before he prints his article. And that's all that I would like for you to do is explain that to you.
Okay, yes. And see, that, that, and, and I'm not sure what brought all that on, because they've never, never been included with our certified values, never in the past.
The rolling stock has always been a separate?
It's always been separate. That is something I get from the contractor's office. And I don't know why, all of a sudden, he started including them.
Well, that was his first year to submit it to us, wasn't it? Before Ben Amador, second year.
Was it?
Well, yes. See, what it was when they changed, uh, software companies, they changed a, the format as to how they do it. And I guess they weren't familiar enough with it. And he plugged in the prior year's rolling stock for two years.
But is it a correct statement that the penny that we did not collect last year, that we're now gonna collect this year?
We will collect it this year.
Yeah, we will collect it.
Because your effective is fifty-seven...
Six nine.
Six, uh-huh. Is that what you got?
Mm-hmm.
And is it also correct that we're, the tax rate that we're, we'll be setting, we will not be collecting more taxes than we collected last year? We'll just be collecting from a different source because oil and gas is going down because the price of oil and gas fell. And there, we have less appraised value in oil and gas now than we do that.
Cause at fifty-seven cents, that, based on the value and the fifty-seven cents, that's going to generate you the same funds as you had last year. Yes.
Same funds as last year.
So my property taxes are not gonna go up?
Well, we'll see.
So Shirley, did, did you say it was point five seven six nine effective tax rate on, at our last meeting?
Yes, I did. Now, I've gone back in and made an adjustment as just a second ago
Okay.
of some values that he had not given me the correct on the new improvements.
So what is our new effective tax rate?
Five seven six, two two eight.
Two two eight?
Uh-huh.
Point five seven six, two two eight.
Two two eight.
And Ms. Stevens, a question I asked before you came in, is that final, or do we expect that that may change? I know that he's got some values that are under dispute. Once those are no longer under dispute, is this gonna change the effective tax rate?
No, sir.
Okay.
Because, see, those values that are under protest, they will not come into play until those are finished. This will have been completed, you will have adopted your tax rate before those are finished out.
I watched it at about three million dollars or something. It wasn't that great.
Three point four, if I remember right.
It wasn't that bad this year, uh, seemingly.
If, if we get part of those, well, then all that'll do is hip out on taxes. It will not hurt them.
Right.
Cause that's already taken into effect.
I mean, it will not hurt. It will not hurt you at all.
And that's what we're looking for right now.
And it's, uh, two million, fifty-one...
Yeah.
Thousand, five eighty.
Nothing's insignificant, but it's not something that is gonna hurt us.
Right.
If we get some of them, it'll be a positive.
It's going to be a positive.
Yeah, okay.
This has just been an unusual year with this, because I had to call him this morning, because I said, I'm not getting these figures to jive. And come to find out, he had not given me completely what I needed on the new improvements.
But the big thing that's caused us to have to go from the fifty-six to the new effective tax rate is that when the price of oil fell...
Yes.
We lost, I don't know, I heard approximately eight hundred thousand dollars worth of taxes.
And see, when your, when your values come down, then your tax rate's gonna come up.
Yeah, your effective tax rate.
So you've lost this value, so your effective is coming up, but you're not actually gaining any more revenue.
But the price rate that we're getting on gasoline will offset a lot of this, but the county's not getting it. The people are getting it, but they're gonna be paying a little bit more because of the effective tax rate.
Angela, will that, will that change very much as far as your numbers?
Shouldn't, because you're out to the, if it was seven, six, nine, you're out way in the decimal point.
It will change them, but it shouldn't be very much. So it's like...
Angela, I brought this for you.
Okay, thank you.
So for the sake of, uh, time and the work that she's done with the numbers that she has, we can work off of this, Judge?
Yes, sir. What's the, uh, what is the consensus of the court on, uh, the tax rate? Would it be to stay at fifty-six, or go to the effective tax rate of point five seven six two?
I think we have to go to the effective tax rate.
It's pretty much black and white, according to the two pages that we have here.
If we don't, we can't pay our bills, so...
Well, we can, but we're gonna, they didn't do like we did last year.
Well, if they don't, we're gonna drop behind like we did last year.
And you could just keep getting further behind.
Yeah.
All right, so the, uh, that question's answered. The next question is, is how does, how does everybody feel regarding the, uh, no raise versus a two percent adjustment?
I'm for two percent.
I've, I've already hashed out my reasoning, and I support the employees a hundred percent. I think everyone deserves a raise, but I'm for a no raise, because I think we have to start operating from a wishful budget to a reality budget. And then hopefully next year, we will have the money to give the raise. But we've got a lot of issues coming up, so I'm for a no raise.
And I'll echo what Commissioner Kirkendall said, and in addition to that, if, if we had to go into contingency next year to give a raise, uh, if we're not in better shape, uh, I would be in favor of doing that, cause I wouldn't wanna go two years without giving a raise if, if we, uh, if we don't give one this year.
I have been and always will be for quality personnel, so I would be for a two percent raise. However, uh, I would suggest that we go back through this budget and cut it some more to get that two twenty-nine down.
I would nub it on that, if that's what it takes to get the raise.
Well, let me, let me say this. Are we gonna get, all the commissioners in the last hearing said, we do not have enough money to take care of our precincts. And so how does it make sense to pay an employee who's not gonna have the material to put it on the ground? That's number one. If we're gonna do cutting, I think we need to restore it to the commissioners. Over four or five year period of time, I've lost over two hundred thousand dollars in precinct two. And to me, it doesn't make sense to keep cutting, cause what other department are we really gonna cut services and put them in the bind that the commissioners are in? We're gonna ask the sheriff to be in a bind? Cause we, we admitted last hearing, we're in a bind. Commissioners are in a bind.
Well, we've been saying that for three months.
For three months, okay. So my way of thinking is, okay, we can, last year we arbitrarily made cuts. We just said, cut precinct two, a hundred thousand, cut precinct three, a hundred thousand, cut precinct four, a hundred thousand, cut, you know, I'm just throwing numbers out there, but it was more than that. And then we, we get to this year and we're like, man, I don't have enough money to do what I need to do. And then accumulative over a four year period of time, which is what we're elected for, now you're half a million dollars you're not putting into the precinct. And all, all they know is, tax rate keeps going up, why can't you come out and put asphalt on my road, clean my ditches, get the, get the equipment done? And so I do not, I mean, if y'all wanna cut the budget, cut the budget. But I'm against cutting the budget anymore, because I think it's not good to put yourself in a bind where you can't do the work that the citizens require. That's personally what I think. And then on top of that, to give a raise, I mean, we're gonna keep giving raises and keep taking from money we need to spend to do business. To me, that doesn't make any sense. And I'm sure that three people in this court could come up with whatever other department they wanna cut, but is it gonna be doing right? The county has grown, the, 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 the personality of the county has changed, and, uh, the expectations of the citizens have changed. We're not nineteen eighty-five. This is twenty fifteen.
If we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
If we go back and look at it like this, though, Chris, without actually saying, let's go back in and cut departments, if we would've took the mentality of that when we added to these departments the last two years, adding to our budget, that, that, that probably would total what we're looking at right here. So, you know, what we done two or three years ago, now we're facing it right here.
Right, well, I brought that up last year and got shot down.
Well, I, I'm, I'm gonna stick with a two percent raise, cause that's less than inflation. And I think that, from what I'm hearing, most out in industry and stuff, they're gonna give, people are gonna get inflation. And we're the only protection that our employees have. We have to balance out between the public and the employees. Our employees do not have a union to speak for them, and thankfully, our employees have not joined a union. I do think if you start skipping years and, and they start falling more behind, and they, they have fallen behind on inflation every year. Because the government has calculated inflation at near three percent, but they have left out food and energy. So for six years, our employees have participated in higher food prices and higher energy prices, and the wages that they have made have not offset those. And I think our employees are already underpaid compared to the counties in our area, that we're in the same shopping area, we buy the same housing, the same automobiles and things like this. And I think for two hundred thousand dollars, if we, you know, don't wanna take it out of the contingency fund, we hunt the cuts, but I think our employees deserve a raise.
I do too. I think they deserve a raise. I just don't think you have the money.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Could you give all the employees a two percent raise, unless they get paid by the county a certain amount, say fifty, sixty thousand, forty thousand, whatever you wanna cut that off at? And then give those employees that make above that a one percent raise. It's not, I mean, effectively, it's not a lot, but a raise is a raise.
Well, that's another thing I brought up early on, when we've had the JPs and constables in here, what the gap has done over the years. Uh, the constables used to make about eleven thousand dollars less than the JPs, and now it's over twenty thousand dollars less. Because a three percent raise across the board continues to widen that gap.
Yeah. And then like, but if you did it like that, that might save you all the two hundred thousand, because...
Well, our court too is giving raises for seventeen to eighteen straight years. I mean, you're on an eighteen year run of three percent, and there's other counties that aren't giving raises. You know, we, we don't have a product to merchandise. And we can't go out and say, okay, we're gonna bring in X product, mark it up by X percent, this will bring in additional revenue. This is taking money from our neighbors who are having to not give their kids a birthday party at Chuck E. Cheese's because they can't afford it.
Yes.
And to put the burden on the taxpayer, eighteen, nineteen, twenty years in a row, as a government, is not good.
Right. I, I've been on this court for nineteen years, and this court has never given above the cost of inflation.
But I have, I have friends who work at the paper mill, and they've gone without raises, they've gone without, this is the first year in about five years that they've even gotten bonuses from the paper mill. So, I mean, we're not asking, especially one time, to end up with the money that we can use next year. We're not asking for a whole lot, we're not asking the employees here to do something that the employees at the paper mill aren't having to do. And they're making fifty to sixty thousand, where our guys are making thirty to thirty-five, maybe forty. But, but, but we're not asking them to do anything their neighbors hasn't done. And I, I talked with several people, there, there, and there are, there are lots of people out there that aren't getting a raise.
But you take an industry. When they get raises, they will often get a five or six percent.
Not lately. Not lately.
Not lately. But ours have never gotten five to six percent.
Well, and, and, and then, and you have the, you have the big argument between government and business. That business owner has a product. And if he makes a profit, it's up to him.
Well, we have a product.
No, we have a service.
No, we, we have a product.
We provide a service.
Well, we provide a service, or you can call it service or product or whatever. We go out and repair roads. The sheriff sends people out to keep them, to hunt down murderers and stuff. Uh, we don't make a product, put it on a shelf at Walmart, true. But we furnish services that for centuries, societies have felt were necessary to keep societies going. And, uh, you know, during good times, and like, you know, businesses, when I was in business, there was years that we shared good profits with our people. This county does not share profits. We don't make profits.
But we really don't have a two share.
Well, I mean, that's, that's debatable, whether we have a two share or not, but, uh... I, I, I think if we do not compensate our people, we're, we're, if we compensate two percent, we're one percent below inflation. We're actually probably more than that, because food prices have not stayed the same. Automobiles this year will go up. I can't remember a year in the last ten, twenty, I don't know how many, that automobiles have not gone up. Things keep going up. Everything we buy goes up. Oil came down this year because of a special situation. But other than that, you go to that grocery store, you go buy you an automobile, you go build your house, they're constantly going up.
Right, and, and with our neighbors.
And inflation has been running somewhere, the true inflation, five to six percent. And our employees have been losing on it each year. And I, as I said...
But our neighbors have too. Our neighbors have too.
Not all of us, some of them have.
Our employees are not on that one. Our neighbors have too. Commissioner Roberts?
Just listening.
What's your position on the, uh, to give or not to give a two percent increase?
I'm always in favor of giving employees an increase. I'm with, I'm with Commissioner Pell. Basically, you got, you've got to pay your employees, or you're not gonna have them.
Oh, I agree. I just wonder where's the two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars gonna come from?
I'd take it for contention. I'd take it for contention.
Basically, what's gonna happen is when we come down to a, uh...
Basically, what's gonna happen is when we come down to a, uh, vote, I think everybody's in agreement on the tax rate that's gonna pass. Uh, but when it comes down to a vote on this budget, I'm gonna vote against the budget, and so is. Mister Kirk and Donald, so is the judge, because they're against the two percent raise, but that's not the reason why I'm voting against it. I'm voting against it because we need to take more out of it, so that the budget's not gonna pass, so I think we need to negotiate.
Well, Commissioner, I think that's what we're here for today.
I can help you out there.
If you're listening.
Let's, let's negotiate now.
Cuts, if that's what takes the satisfaction you, let's take more cuts because. I hate to see you vote against the budget, I mean, the commissioners have an obligation to put a budget together. An individual commissioner will never get everything that they want in that budget.
I'm not for any cuts. Because I think we're going backwards. As a county, so y'all can discuss it, but I will be voting against any more budget cuts, I'm not gonna ask any department to have a stress on them that I have on me in precinct two.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
And I respect you standing by that, if, are you including saying that you're not gonna vote for any more cuts? Would you say that things we've added to this budget this time would be a cut? If we go back and look at that?
No, I'm talking about anything, no.
Okay, alright.
Well, for the record, in case you didn't know, uh, Judge knows and Angela knows, I, I rescind it all of mine.
He rescinded all of it.
And I actually took, I'm actually taking a budget cut. I'm, I'm going the other way.
By how much?
Couple of thousand?
Twenty-two hundred, I believe.
Twenty-two hundred dollars. I appreciate you. Doing that.
Two thousand, two hundred ninety-two dollars.
For me, the additions I did was, but just because arbitrarily. Y'all voted to cut my budget last year and then give me time to, to figure out where I needed money, I had equipment to pay for that was already noted out, what wasn't taken into consideration, and I can't take any more money from materials. I've got two hundred thousand dollars less in material budget than I had four years ago, two hundred thousand, that's a lot of money.
I've got about three hundred thousand.
Well, I mean, so when's the insanity with it?
The, uh, the fact that Commissioner Roberts. Did not go through what his proposal was, is, is it included in these numbers you give us?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're not in agreement on where the money's gonna come from, there's three commissioners in favor of the two percent raise. We need to get, uh, to a, a place where we agree where to take the two hundred twenty-nine thousand from to, to cover that. Do you have any, uh, cuts that you wanna identify?
Yes, we, uh, give an increase in Esther's car allowance this year, and I suggest taking that back.
Alright, that was twenty-four hundred dollars?
We gave an increase to, uh, JP Five on the, uh. Part-time clerk. And then she came in and wanted, uh, some, some kind of software, what was the amount on that?
Eight thousand, is that right?
It was, well, for the one time, it's twelve thousand, four seventeen, cause it's eight thousand, and then, um, four thousand for the eight thousand two.
Well, that'd be pro-rated.
Didn't she give up that part-time?
Yeah, she gave up a part-time.
Over the year, she was saving way more than what we were.
I thought she came up with thirteen thousand dollar savings. Didn't she?
Yes, yeah, so that's a twenty-three thousand dollar expenditure, and she came up with, uh, saving thirteen thousand.
Okay.
What did we give the constables?
A hundred, a hundred dollars.
Three of them, it was a hundred dollars each, and we also gave reinstated Commissioner Precinct Four's vehicle allowance from last year.
I think that was a, a unanimous decision once we talked to the sheriff.
That was, yes, sir.
Okay, in the budget, the car allowance for Esther is still six thousand dollars. It didn't increase in the proposed.
I thought we did two hundred a month.
Yeah, it's supposed to be.
Went to eight or something, didn't it?
What do you have, six thousand? It's supposed to be eighty-four hundred.
Okay, it wasn't changed.
So we can mark that off?
Right.
So it wasn't changed?
It was not changed.
Later section.
I'm gonna take twenty-four hundred out of my car allowance and give it to Esther.
Well, I, I think though, in, in, we're trying to come up with two hundred fifty thousand, that twelve hundred, that, that, uh.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, uh, that, what is it?
Two twenty-nine?
Twenty-four hundred out of a year is not a big deal, it's not a significant deal, out of two hundred twenty-five thousand. And she works countywide, really on behalf of the commissioners.
She don't work on behalf of me.
Well, she works on behalf of me, so I'll take that out of my car allowance.
I don't think you ought to, Judge.
I don't think you ought to either, Judge.
Well, in order to make sure she gets it, that's what I'm gonna do.
Was it included?
It was not included. No, in your, in your folder.
We approved it, it just didn't get included.
In your folder, there's copies of the budgets that has been entered.
I, I, I would go back to the argument that. And, and I know that we don't wanna draw that contingency fund any lower than possible. Or practical, you can draw it to nothing as possible, because when I started on this court, we had zero contingency fund. And I was the advocate that said, a county needs savings. We need to be able to fund ourselves for the last three months of the year, rather than pledging tax anticipation notes.
Well, what do you figure it's gonna cost to tear down the old hospital? Cause that's gonna have to come out of contingency.
As much as it is to build a new, new building, probably.
Okay, so you're a million and a half to get rid of the old hospital, you can't leave it sitting there forever.
Well, you can't leave it sitting there forever, but you can certainly leave it sitting there for a while. And you can, that hospital may have some salvage value to it. I mean, we, those, those are things we don't know. But, you know, we've had to grapple with situations that we didn't anticipate. But things happen in life.
To me, that's what the rainy day fund or the contingency fund is for, it's not for paying salaries every year, it's not for recurring expenses.
Well, I, I can agree with you there, Judge, but I can also look at it this way. The reason that contingency fund is not up per four million or so is because. We took a severe appraised value loss in oil and gas that we were not anticipating.
Well, let me ask something, Ken, if.
We did not anticipate finding mold over here in the, uh, annex.
If, if, if my wife and I are working, and she gets laid off and finds another job but makes five hundred dollars less. Can I keep spending what she used to make, or do we have to make cuts in our personal budget?
You have to make cuts.
Okay, and that's what this court needs to do, we can't keep spending like that money's coming in.
I'm saying, let, let's get with the cuts, I'm willing to make cuts.
Well, you're at, we're asking one time to forego a pay raise, everybody on the court unanimously agrees the employee should have one. But we're asking one time out of eighteen years to say no.
Judge?
I don't really feel like I'm all that important.
Well, I disagree.
Everybody's important.
I was an elected official, just speaking as a, as a citizen. How much did you, uh, say that the, uh, increases are gonna be this year for people that wanted a raise? And how much did that total, could I ask?
For what?
Everybody that came and wanted increases in their salaries or car allowance or whatever, what, what was the total of that?
Probably less than ten thousand.
No, it's more than ten thousand.
Well, we look at the constables and Esther, that's what we were talking about.
Are you talking about what we talked about salary adjustments at the beginning of our meeting?
Yeah, that was thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand.
With benefits and everything.
Has to raise people to the proper step that have been left behind for up to twelve years.
My, my thought would be is if, if we're in, and we are in a bad place right now. But. If, if you're not gonna give a raise, which I can understand why you wouldn't give a raise. But why would you increase anybody's budget or anybody's salary? Or just a few people over here, and, you know, we don't have the money, I don't understand that.
That was my thinking, we had a lot of people that had justification for adding to their budget, but we don't have the money. And that's why I was against voting for the increase that we gave to the, uh, constables now. Uh, Esther came in here and said that she's driving twenty-five thousand miles a year, or more. And, uh, we're only paying her six thousand a year, we should be paying her probably around twelve thousand a year. And I agreed to go up a hundred, uh, two hundred dollars a month on, on her, so we didn't go up to where we probably should, but I think we had to do something. And, uh. I think there were at least two other commissioners that agreed with that. But, uh, there's some other, other things we added, but, uh. I felt like on JP Five is the part that we cut and then added back in, I feel like that will be a benefit to us in the future. And if it's not, we'll have to cut it out in the future. But even though we increased that by, I think it was twenty-two or twenty-three hundred dollars a year over what she pays now for software. Uh, looks to me like, or at least this company is promising that they're gonna collect more. So let's, let's take a look at it and see if they do, let's give them a chance. It may pay for itself, that's what, that's, that was the sales pitch anyway.
Less than that.
But it may not, and if it don't, then we may have to cut it out later, and she was told that as well. Uh, what were the other additions that we had?
Well, I had a little bit, but. I was cut a hundred thousand last year, and I. It's gotta balance, it don't balance, I don't have nowhere to give it.
It's just my idea, my thought that. If, if we're in a bad place. We should start back where we was last year and not ask for anything, and just, you know, if we're not gonna give a raise, then. We shouldn't adjust anybody else's up. It's just my thought, and I might not know what's going on, and I knew it this, but.
That's a good thought.
Well, it's, it is a good thought, but, and with that. If, if you always balance your checkbook and you're a dollar off every time, it will add up. And we're finally getting to that point. That it's just, it's, it's not been enough, year after year after year after year after year. And it's adding up. And, uh. And so. At some point in time, you've gotta stop the hemorrhaging, you know, and you've got to get the wound stabilized so you can start breathing again. And what I wish the court would do is instead of spending contingency, you go one year. If we manage the budget right, which we're, we're, we're certainly trying to do that, you end up with a surplus. And then you start spending out of your savings account. Versus out of having to borrow from the bank, which is your contingency, right now, we're borrowing from the bank every year, at least three hundred thousand, it's three hundred ninety-one thousand, I think last year, we borrowed from the bank to balance the budget. And, and if we could save that amount of money, let's just say we saved three hundred ninety thousand, then next year, we have real money. To give away versus continue going into the savings account, and since I've been on the court, I've heard every year it's gonna be better, and it's never been better. And so, my feelings are cemented in no, because I'm a taxpayer. Everybody that I talk, I can't think of anybody. Uh, who hasn't made, in, in the five years I've been on court, I can't think of anybody who hasn't sold a vehicle. Stopped shopping at Dillard's. And gone to Penny's, that, that haven't made changes. And I think the county needs to do it because the last budget hearing, all four commissioners admitted, we don't have the money to take care of our precincts. So why would we continue to cut ourselves? And if, and I, and that, that's been the mindset of the court, so why would I cut you? If I'm okay to cut me, then I'm okay to cut you. And then why would I have you as frustrated as I am? When the county's grown, the demand on the services you provide are more, the expectations are more. You know, even this weekend, I had several phone calls of us wanting to do things, I'm not gonna be able to because I don't have the money. They don't understand that. And then last year with the appraisal district, with the work, the rate, the way the taxes was raised up, I had one business owner come and I said, well, look, man, I'm paying my lowest pay. You know, they were outraged because there was such an increase in their appraisals. So we're talking in my office, I said, well, look, man, my bottom line, bottom line guy makes fourteen, he said, well, that's good, he said, my bottom line guy makes eleven. And so he, 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 he didn't wanna hear my song and dance about the employees because his employees and, and his, his appraisal went up four times the amount. Of what it was a year before, so four hundred percent increase in his, in his tax appraisal, and so. That's where I am, and, you know, for instance, you, you, at some point in time, whether I'm Commissioner Precinct Two or not. Whoever's in this chair's gotta have enough money to do what he needs to do, precinct two carries forty-five percent of all the infrastructure on the roads in the whole county, forty-five percent, it's nearly half. And yet, we've taken the biggest cut.
Although I know that these little increases don't total up to be a great amount. But, uh. I could hear too him saying, I make, I get seventy-two hundred dollars a, a year for car allowance. And I go everywhere, but I'm not coming in here asking the court for no extra car allowance.
Right.
And I, I don't see where they're going any further distance than I do.
Who's they?
Uh, Esther or even Teresa Wiggly, she's a emergency management, we don't have any emergency management stuff going on. And, uh, she gets a ten thousand dollar car allowance.
Half of it is.
Yeah, I, uh, these, I did, I guess it's, it's time to. Just let your frustrations out.
Well, Judge, have you kept up with how many miles you drive on, when you get called out and?
Keep up with it, but I, I do drive a lot.
I don't either during election time. And I go the whole county.
And since we've changed banks, I have to at least, uh, go to the bank.
I do too.
In Salisbury now.
But, I don't.
But I, I certainly don't need a car allowance.
I didn't bring that up to calls anymore.
I don't either, I don't need, I don't want a car allowance either, but I'm interested.
I just said, you know, we're trying to cut the budget.
I, I just time it.
And, and my thing is, I don't know where we cut it. I, I, I think we've made cuts in the past that were wrong.
I think, I think we have too, and whenever I harp on cuts, I'm, I might be coming wrong, uh, across. I've disagreed with giving the county attorney an assistant, I've disagreed with the district attorney getting a new investigator, last year, we gave thirty thousand dollars for. An assistant district attorney, I mean, this, things that we've added to the budget is what I'm talking about, you know, that I was in disagreement with, I don't know that we can cut two hundred something thousand from this budget. But that, my point is, things we've done in the past is now catching up with us.
Absolutely.
I don't, I don't see two hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts, there's just no way.
I, I, there probably is. So with that in mind, I'd change my vote to no on two percent raise and we can go to the house, how's that?
Is that?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm changing my vote.
Alright, any further discussion?
I'll just make one last statement, I think it's a mistake to balance this budget on the back of our employees. I think that it'd be better to take it out of the contingency, the contingency is still above three million dollars.
This is just proposed anyway.
But whatever we propose today is fixing to be. In concrete pretty soon, I would think, you know, you're getting down to D date. And, uh, I, I think this, out of a. What's our total budget gonna be, uh, eighteen million dollars or better? That to balance it on the back of the employees for two hundred and. Twenty-nine thousand dollars is the wrong way for this county to go.
I don't think, I disagree with that, I don't think we're balancing it on the back, I don't want to be known as the commissioner. Who voted to balance the budget on the back of our employees, I wanna be known as a commissioner who's trying to keep employees employed. Trying to make the county healthier financially with all of the money, if you take the annex and tearing down the old hospital, your contingency's gone, you didn't have a hurricane. And I, I'm, I'm not asking the employ, I'm not, I'm not trying to create a burden on the employees. But financially, we keep going through this, and at some point in time, there has to be an adjustment.
I think you take eighteen million dollar budget, you can scrub and get two hundred thousand dollars, but that's just my thoughts. In business, it would be easy to get two hundred thousand dollars, but, uh.
Judge?
Yes, ma'am.
If it, if in fact it goes to where the employees would not get a two percent raise, I would like to rescind the, the request I made for separate raises to be looked at next year possibly.
I think we need to do that, no matter what.
You need to do that?
Well, I just think we need to get the people to the step that they need to, that they're supposed to be at, they should've been there, some of them eight, eight or nine years ago.
Some of mine has been there for years, and just because they don't have a title.
Right.
They're not getting to pay.
I'm, I'm for what we did on the step increases. I'm for a two percent raise, I'm for a three percent raise. But whenever you start, sit down and start looking at, that was a good idea you had too, by the way, Joe, I mean, that's something we could look at there, you know, well, I don't know if we've ever done it in the past, but.
Can we legally do that?
What's that?
Give a certain amount of, uh, raise to a certain employees and a certain, a different amount to others?
We would have to research it. I don't know the legality of it.
It's gonna be easy to figure, wouldn't it?
I think in the past, I remember in the past over the years that we gave and across the board grades, we didn't give a percentage.
Pay the dollar amount?
Two percent, three percent, they, they gave a fifty dollar raise or whatever raise, you know, I remember that.
How many employees do we have?
Two hundred and eighty-nine.
Full and part time?
Full and part.
And that's grants too.
Yeah, that's grants. That's the whole number of employees.
If you look at this page that says budget workshop, July the twenty-seventh on top, it will show you the differences among your general, jury, road and bridge, and interest and sinking. That's how much those amounts went up over last year. Or decreased over last year.
Right now, our proposed twenty fifteen budget is nineteen eight ninety seven thirteen?
In that line item that says differences, for example, general fund was reduced by eighty-eight thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. The jury and jury fund increased by forty-one thousand eight ninety-seven.
And the road and bridge increase was fifty-four four seventeen?
Yes, sir. And then our interest in sinking decreased by two thousand fifty dollars.
Does anybody in the audience have anything that they'd like to address the court with?
I'm glad I'm retiring.
Sheriff?
I just have some information for you. I was, I was gonna say. Uh, the, you may have already shared this, I don't know.
Is it about the medical bill? No, sir, I haven't. No, sir, I haven't. No, sir, I haven't.
They can't save us any money at all. Matter of fact, it's increasing.
Yeah, I wanted to wait until you finished going through those to make sure.
I went through them all weekend and, uh, as a matter of fact, I had to come back and ask questions as to, to, uh, David, is, was I reading it right? Because the lowest one, the very lowest one, using a hundred, using the number of inmates at a hundred and twenty-five, which we haven't been at a hundred and twenty-five. This year, we're averaging one fifty-three a day. Uh, but using one twenty-five, the lowest probably at forty-five dollars a day per inmate, it's, that comes out to like fifty thousand dollars more than what we're paying right now.
And that's based on a hundred and twenty-five. If you upped it to the one fifty-three, it'd be all up.
Now, this, you're talking, Sheriff, about uh, county operation versus private operations? So it just shows we're operating pretty efficient.
We can do it cheaper, yes.
Yeah, we can do it cheap.
At this point in time, we can do it cheaper than what they.
We appreciate you looking at it anyway. I mean, I thank you.
I thought it might do some good, uh, as I, as I visited with the judge last Friday, I went to the sheriff's conferences last week and, uh, I heard some horror stories on management companies and, and all, and, uh, so I was not real big on it anyway after hearing some of these things. I know you can hear anything, but I talked to sheriffs that have actually done it. I've talked, I've talked to sheriffs that are doing it at this time, Liberty County for one, and, uh, it's just it's not necessarily so pretty on the surface. It saves some county some money, yes, it would certainly help out in this situation here. But you're gonna look at the long shot too. But it makes no difference because they didn't come in anywhere near what I thought they might.
You had two beds?
Yes, yes, we had two beds.
I kinda felt that was gonna be the case because of when I went in office here, I come from business. And I looked at contracting out the road and bridge work. It would've been far more expensive than what the county's doing it for. It's just, county's operating pretty efficiently.
It's one of those situations where it really takes a bigger jail, uh, more beds, I should say, because what these companies are looking for is empty bed space so they can do the, the, the contracting out.
Yeah.
But heck, if we had it, I'd be doing it. We'd be making, we're making a little bit of that anyway, so if we had, you know, a hundred extra beds sitting over there, you know, nobody put in, we'd be making forty-five dollars a day on them, but we don't have that.
All right. Did you wanna bring up about that medical bill or not?
Not to, no.
Well, they're doom and gloom. I'm sorry, it's just, uh, the jail is a burden. That's, we all know that, but it's a necessary burden. Uh, as far as the medical part of the jail, I still think, I talked to David this morning, uh, I wanna explore every way possible that we might can save money in the medical area on that item because we're gonna come in over this year by a large margin. I think we've already discussed that. Uh, we just have one inmate with a thirty thousand dollar bill. It was eighty-six, and I wanna commend Linda Davis doing an excellent job of getting that down to thirty. So we're spending thirty thousand dollars on an invoice right now with thirteen thousand left in that line.
And you've still got two and a half months left to operate.
Go back to medical. And, uh, this is one of those things where it's not anybody's fault necessarily. It's a situation where a guy was bench warranted back here. He developed a, a major, he's dead by the way. He just died when they took him back to prison. He had major medical issues we couldn't get rid of. It's like a hot potato you're trying to get rid of and you can't. And, uh, I hate to say that with a human being, I, I don't mean that in the wrong way at all.
Yes, sir.
But it was just, when it comes to money, it was a situation that we couldn't get out of, and now we owe it. And, uh, those things can happen, just as we've talked about with other issues of all of us. They can happen and they're unforeseen and like mold and everything else. It pops up on you, you don't, you don't see it coming. So medical is something we need to continue to explore, and we will on our end. And the jail, uh, again, if there's anything, the health department in any form, fashion, or way that we're already paying for can help us in that area, I'd love to see us try to save some money there. The other thing that's not in my budget, but we have it on seizure money, and that's where we're gonna have to do it, is mandated, some of our good legislative work in Austin. Uh, we gotta have body cameras. That's not in our budget. We're gonna be mandated to have by law.
To have what, Sheriff?
Body cameras.
Oh. Something that just come out about a month ago, is that right?
It's law now. And it's so, uh.
They didn't furnish any money for it?
Oh, of course not. They never do. So, uh, I didn't ask for that in the budget. I'm not going to.
What's the, uh, what's the deadline? Bu- bu- what's the timeframe you have to have, acquire them?
I believe it's gonna end up being January the first, possibly giving us a year. I think they're working on that, giving us a year.
It'd be nice.
Yeah.
Is there anywhere in the, in the law that regulates that, that says we can do away with a car camera?
No, but it's car cameras, not mandatory.
I mean, if you gotta, if you have a policy that says that body camera will be running the, the whole time you're on a call, then other than the traffic stop, I mean, yeah, you might disagree with me.
The law reads contact in public, period. Not this traffic stop.
I mean, do you see the body camera taking the place of the in-car camera? Eventually?
You can't. Uh, that's like I said, you have to, you have to record everything, and you, your body camera's not gonna record the whole traffic stop like a car camera will.
Same senator that got the, the in-car video cameras hot and going. Racial profiling information hot and going, got the body camera. Society's way of thinking, and I'm, I'm on camera and I, Daniel's probably gonna write every word I say, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna say it. We're not going to alleviate the problems we're having out here in our country with cameras.
Right.
No.
That's not gonna happen. And you, all we're doing is pleasing, uh, pleasing the small minority that's griping about every single thing that a police officer does. Things are what they are, and, and cameras are not gonna change. I'm not opposed to them.
No.
I like cameras. I think they do, they do me a great job because when people come in there, I just had one complain, said, said all this was said and none of that was said.
Right.
And I asked the lady to come and watch it, she didn't want to, so.
Right.
Well, cameras themselves are, are not quite, I mean, I guess they're, they're expensive, they're an expense, and they're expensive, but what's really gonna be expensive is the uh, infrastructure to put in the sheriff's office to house all that video for the length of time you gotta have it.
It is a nightmare. We're looking at fifty thousand easy.
I wish cameras would change hearts. We could pass them out at church.
And the other thing that goes along with, with all of that is more open record requests, which we, y'all have graciously allowed Laconia to become a full-time employee and, and, and that's working out real well. And part of her job was open record requests along with, with the county attorney's office. And, uh, I'm not here to speak for the county attorney, but I know that this is burdening all, both of us, both our office and hers. And, uh, it's just getting worse and worse. They want every single thing every day. And again, that's not gonna change what's going on in our country. So, we're doom and gloom, I'm sorry. It's just the way, that's the direction it's going. But I think we're gonna, I'll be able to get the body cameras another way. I don't wanna ask for it in the budget.
Did we find out if the governor signed that engine attorney fee law? Or the state pick up some of those engine?
I'm sure I haven't, I haven't seen anything on that. Where do we, uh, are we done?
Well, I, I haven't said anything, and, uh, this goes along with what the sheriff was saying, and, and I've been pretty quiet. Um, the problem I see, and that was even before I was in this position, is I realize the county government is not a business. We're, we're, that's one of the first things I was told. But we do operate like a business. The cost of operating a business, no matter if you're in private sector, county, whatever, is going up. There's no changing that. So even, even by us doing, you know, no, no raise or whatever, the cost is still going to go up. Are we gonna be able to cover that cost next year? Well, if we have to buy body cameras, we have, we're still not gonna have no money to pay for it. Uh, it's still gonna have to come from somewhere. We have to do something different. And, and, uh, I know that it's a bad word to say, hey, did we raise the tax, tax rate enough, or are we raising taxes enough? I'm a taxpayer too. I don't wanna pay any more taxes. I don't wanna see my neighbors have to pay any more taxes. But for the use or the cost of doing business, even within our county budget, we have to be able to finance it. And to be able to finance it, we have to, we have to draw the tax rate in. Uh, I hate to say it like that, but that's just a fact. It's a fact of life. Either we're gonna have the money or we're not gonna have the money. And, uh, as it goes and as it's been going, we're, we're, you know, like, like Wayne said back when, we've still been taken, you know, from the contingency to, to balance the budget, to make ends meet. Eventually, that contingency's gonna run out. But not only that, you're taking from contingency and cutting your budget.
Cutting your budget.
Business is going up, you're giving away money. We're steadily going down. We can't, we can't, we can't continue that free fall.
Well, I, I'd just like to remind, the reason we're in this free fall is because the comptroller's office, and they did it based upon, I assume, instructions or law from the legislature. They changed the oil and gas formula. And that cost us, before they realized their error and changed it back, it cost us something over two million dollars in taxes. And when they changed it back, the horse was out of the barn, the wells had depleted, that was, uh, found by this three D seismic. And it wasn't coming back. So we lost about two million dollars. When the feds cut the discount rate to zero, which helped some people, but where we were getting a half million dollars a year off our tax deposits, we're now getting, what, less than fifty thousand? So we lost about three million there. We lost about five million dollars. If this court hasn't lo, hadn't lost five million dollars in the last six years, we'd be in good shape. But those things are beyond our control. The mold's beyond our control. You know? I think Harden County's done a great job managing the resources that it has with what has happened in society. And will it get better? Who knows where it'll get better? May get worse. If it does, we may be making cuts we don't wanna make.
Well, I wanna go on record, like, like you're saying, uh, for the newspapers. Uh, the public needs to know that this court, this county, is not necessarily the bad guys in this case. Once again, being mandated by the state, by the federal government, whoever, we have to pick up those costs. And it's just like the cameras for the, for the patrol officers or, you know, you can only push so much down on the county. We can't absorb everything they mandate us to do. It has to come from somewhere. Well, unfortunately, it's coming from the public. So the public needs to know, they need to pick up the phone and call that state legislator. They need to call their federal legislator. Whoever, and say, quit putting the stuff back down on us, because invariably, it is going back down on the public. You and I are paying for the state saying, hey, we balanced our budget, and we're giving a two, two million dollar cut. No. They're not balancing. They're balancing their budget, like, like Ken says, they don't wanna balance the budget on, on our backs of our employees. The state's balancing th- their budget on the backs of its citizens, right? That, that's the bottom line. We're, we can only do it for so long. The money has to come from somewhere, and it comes from the public. It comes from the citizens. Whether it's for federal, whether it's from state, or whether it's from the local. But unfortunately, we're being made to be the bad guys because we're the ones gonna have to ask for the money to make our ends meet. And, and that's just the way I see it. I may be wrong. I don't know if y'all agree with me or disagree with me. But it, it's coming to a point where, you know, we have cut, uh, I've heard Titan Belt do whatever. I watched last year the tightening of the belt and the year before. The county has tightened its belt just about as far as it can go. We, we're scraping the barrel when we're asking for a two hundred dollar cut or a three hundred dollar cut there. Those are not, those are not gonna keep making it. And apparently, they're, they didn't this year. So, like I said, you, you might wanna put in there that the public needs to understand, the county's not the bad guys in this case. We've done everything we can, but when you're steadily mandated, how mu- how much are those ca, those cameras a piece, Sheriff? Body cameras? So, there you go. Those thousand dollars times.
Twenty-three. That's what I came up with, is that right?
Yep. Twenty-three thousand dollars, that's being mandated again down on top of us. And that doesn't include, like, like they were saying, that doesn't include the storage of it, uh, the, the management of it or anything else. That's just the camera. So you could probably at least double that, if I'm, if, if I'm probably thinking right, at least double that, if not more. That's being mandated down onto us by the state. If I figure, and this is the way I feel about it, if the state's gonna mandate it, the state should be the ones coming up with the money to pay for it. And not bragging about how they, they, they've got an excess in budget and how they did all this great stuff and, and making themselves look good in the course of making us look bad. It's not right.
I said my spill.
Thank you, Commissioner.
It's exactly what's happening.
That's right.
Okay, just to kinda recap what happened, um, the effective tax rate is point five seven six two, and so you want me to calculate?
Yes, ma'am.
Based on that? With no raises? And no step adjustments or?
Yes, we want step adjustments.
You approve this, that?
The thirty-six thousand dollar figure you gave us.
Plus step adjustments, okay. Is that everything?
Thirty-six one sixty.
So that's what you, you would like for Wednesday?
Please. Is that the consensus?
I'm still gonna vote against the budget, but yeah, that's the consensus.
Well, what can we do to make you vote for it?
Well, I don't think there's anything this court can do. It's already been done, so.
Well, I don't like that we're not all on the same page, but, uh, I, I think we've got to be responsible. And, uh, and I believe that the cuts that we've made in operations, I, I don't see where we could cut much more. Uh, there's a few things I didn't disagree wi, that I didn't agree with, but I wasn't, I was in the minority, and so I voiced my opinion on that, and I'm not gonna vote against the budget based on just those few things being in there. The only things I, that I can see we could cut now going forward is gonna be, uh, personnel. I don't see any other operational expenses that we can cut, not, not to amount to much.
What are their positions that we can cut?
That's what I'm talking about. It'd have to be personnel. We cut two. We cut the.
Personnel is basically what makes the budget up of this county.
That's the majori, majority of it. Uh, I don't see any department heads for the past three months offering to cut any personnel, and I don't see, that's not gonna happen. I mean, everybody that you have, everybody that you have, and that I have, we gotta have them.
I cut one back in, uh, I think it was like two thousand and nine. I never did fill that position.
And you're funding one or we're funding one out of a.
On preservation. It's okay. It's not even, you know, two.
Anything further from anyone? Anyone in the audience have anything further? So what can we do to make you vote for it?
Well, I don't think there's anything this court can do, it's already been done, so.
Adjusting the salaries, because I know they're low. But to add someone's car allowance that they've been getting along despite, I'm against that, and I just feel like that if we're not gonna have money to give a raise across the board, then let's not add car allowances. You know, to people's car, add money to their car allowance.
To my knowledge, we're just talking about the three constables and Esther, is that right? The Constable Precinct Two, Precinct Five, and Precinct Six, and then Esther.
Yep, the six thousand dollars for annually.
However much it is, that's just my thoughts as a taxpayer, not as a, just a piece.
Well, I'm gonna offset Esther's by taking it out of mine, so that one's covered, does anybody wanna address the three? I don't mind doing it, it's fine.
I know you don't.
Does anybody wanna address the three constable increases, or are we done with that?
Well, I've got a part-time operator, seventeen thousand six fifty-nine, I'll take him out.
Again, commissioners have, have borne the brunt, well over a million dollars in the last four years.
Commissioners have to set the tax rate.
Yeah, but I'm not going backwards. You know, my, my integrity means more, I mean, I'd rather look at a guy in the face and tell him, I can't afford to fix his place, than for him to think I'm negligent. And I'm, I'm not, I think voting to cut my budget anymore, I'm negligent. And I, and I, and for the record, I haven't voted to cut my budget at all. Last year, the court voted to cut my budget, I was against that cut.
Alright, so we're gonna leave the three constables at the hundred dollars a month extra, which is twelve hundred dollars a year, is there any discussion on that?
Tim, Tim is the one who started that discussion, how do you feel about that? I mean, you just cut a position.
How much total did we?
That'd be thirty-six hundred dollars.
I think it was just two, regiment, it's just two.
Precinct Two, Precinct Five, and Precinct Six.
I mean, you just cut a position, so.
Well, I paid for this.
Okay, Precinct One stayed the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Precinct Two went from fourteen four to fifteen six, so twelve hundred dollars. Precinct Three stayed the same, Precinct Four went up from ninety-six to fourteen four.
That because, is that the one that started, sir, papers again?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Precinct Five went up twelve hundred dollars, and Precinct Six went up twelve hundred dollars, so you're correct, three, three precincts. Three, you're correct.
Thank you.
Did you say two?
Three.
No, no, did you say Precinct Two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's Constable Hawthorne, Constable Smith, and Constable Moody. Constable Moody made the request.
Well, the only way I'd go with that is if we take every increase that we've made in this budget.
That's the only way I'd go for it too.
If we wanna go back and take every increase that we've made in this budget.
That's the only way I'd go for it too, otherwise, let's leave it in there along with Esther's.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think the judge's.
That's, that's the idea behind the whole thing, it's not the fact I don't think a constable needs this, this, and this. I say, we can't give it to everybody that needs it, let's don't give it to nobody that needs it, that's what I've been saying for four years.
If we all go back, take the cost. Everybody will operate with the budget they had last year.
Well, I understand, but personally, I disagree with Precinct Two, 'cause y'all cut my budget and didn't leave me enough money to pay my equipment notes. You didn't leave me enough money to purchase another vehicle, I've got a truck with a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it, it's gonna have to be replaced. And the numbers on the material is not what was agreed to when we were in court, it was cut a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
But I made that up, Chris.
Right, but, but that, but that needs to stay in, 'cause current, if, if, if we say we go back, if we're saying you cut everything that's been added, then you're cutting mine.
I thought it was in your budget.
That was a permanent transfer.
Okay, permanent transfer, and then I, what I need is, I need the thirteen thousand, two eighty-nine to pay my equipment, and I need the extra ten thousand to buy that pickup.
Man, I can show you my list of equipment that I've got, I just had him to run it, and I've got a grater that's eleven years old, a grater, all that stuff, twelve years old.
I got a grater that's twenty-two years old.
Well, you don't have any grater roads, though.
Yeah, I do, I know what I do, and it gets called, I get called on regularly.
You got what, one mile or two miles?
Seven miles.
Well, I've got ninety-something miles.
Yep, but, that's part of it. Oh, that's a good, that's a good point that y'all were talking about right there, we could have a, a combined fleet on a couple of them now. You know, Chris needs two, and you need two.
I don't have one, I've never had but one grater.
We could share one, you know, I mean, there's all kind of ideas we could look at.
Yeah, that's.
But that's stuff that we have that's paid for.
Right, right.
So that's not gonna make any difference at all.
Yeah.
Well.
But when it comes time to replace it, that's when it would be.
That's right, when it comes time.
When it comes time to replace it, probably the common sense thing's gonna be for me to pick up his, I got roads in that area anyway, so. But it's no, it's no big deal right now, but we're gonna have to look at every way to skin the cattle.
Which all of us work well together.
Yeah, well, we always have, you know, we've shared equipment. If Bobby and I had the shared equipment, well, this, we'd have made a lot more purchases than what we have.
Y'all enjoying this? Uh, this, this is, I mean, look at the Supreme Court, you got nine of the smartest people in the world sitting up there, and they got nine different opinions, you know?
I don't think I'd disagree with them being the smartest people in the world. Yeah, I'm not sure there's.
We have different sort of opinions. Well, I know for me, I gotta have that, I gotta, I gotta go pay that equipment note, and I gotta go purchase that pickup. I think we put too much emphasis on the, uh, now I can't even think straight, I think we put too much emphasis on our contingency, county's not in the business of saving money. Put money up and saving it, and I think we overemphasize how much money we have to fall back on.
Well, I, I'll agree with you there, and I do believe we need a contingency.
We do need a, I, I'm just saying we.
I was advocate for it because we had a commissioner in support that didn't believe you in any contingency.
I believe we need a contingency, I just say I think that we're overemphasizing.
That's the reason I've said, you know, to take two hundred thousand, well, it'd be less than that, 'cause as I said, I just took nearly eighteen thousand out of my budget. So I guess it's down around two hundred thousand, to take two hundred thousand out of this contingency for this year, when we got surprised with this oil price cut, and be able to give the employees a two percent raise, to me, just makes good common sense.
Well, but if you end up with engine health, have the spin what's mandated, that, that cuts you down a half a million. If you, if you put, if you had to pay for the annex, then if, if, if you took the, uh, engine health, if you took the annex and tear down the old building, you're broke, you're borrowing money. So it's not that, it's, it's not that we're just sitting there with all this money as working capital, I mean, you, there, there are a lot of decisions this court has to face.
But we're not gonna pay for that annex out of contingency.
Well, we hope we don't.
What do you mean?
I wouldn't be for that.
Right, no, but, but what I'm saying, I wouldn't be for it either, but we haven't heard from the voters, we haven't had public hearings.
I think the voters are gonna go with this, sir.
It's gonna be hard, and I, we can go home now, 'cause I've already swapped my vote, but it's gonna be hard to ever make up if we skip a, a raise for our employees. You'll, you'll never make it up. We'll never make it up. But nothing, you'll never make up the money we're not putting in our precinct either, we're still cutting road and bridge budget, when we've admitted we don't have enough money to take care of what we got. And you'll, you'll never make that up, if, if that hundred thousand stays cut out of my budget in this term, I, I cannot make up not having four hundred thousand to spend on roads, I can't make it up.
Didn't have it, just swap his whole pack of raises.
I've never been one to be wishy-washy, but.
I, I thought I heard you say.
When I see the judge wanting to take a car allowance out of his own personal for an employee out here, it, it makes me stop and think.
Yeah, I, I think we're getting too. I think we're all hungry, I think we're, put the raise back in, go eat lunch.
Okay, no raises?
Uh, is that where you're at, Commissioner?
He swapped his vote.
He swapped his, I need to know.
Are we, you asked for raises or not?
For Wednesday.
I'm for a raise, but I swapped my vote to no raise.
Okay.
Okay.
He just swapped again. Do you miss?
Okay.
Did I miss something?
Thank you very much.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Oh, you can have time to catch a bite, let's.